It's not them, it's Zoom.
It's not them, it's Zoom.
Okay.
It's all.
I got you now.
You got it.
All right. So should be able to hear. All right, cool. Now we can rock and roll. All right, we're ready for the presentation. Let me share my screen. And we'll go to slideshow. But.
It's got embedded sound in that long.
Yeah. It's okay. Hey, what's? This is our first presentation.
And the other one for Christina that looks good.
Somebody's mute on there.
Which one was that?
I can't because I've got.
Guys, you got that one. Probably wanted to stand there, go back and then.
I think that's the end of the presentation. Is that it? Okay, cool. Worked out okay. Here, I just mute this one. Now we're good to go. And we'll do this one and we're good. You good? Okay. So touchy. We can start from that first slide and we'll we'll ask for each slide as we go.
So the other interesting thing.
So you want me to go back through the slides?
We're doing our Arbor Day.
Okay. He kind of. He's moved on now.
And that he was on. Remind me.
You got it.
February twentieth, Monday, right? At eleven o'clock.
You want me to share it again? We'll just go up and say a few remarks about each slide and we'll just go through the slides.
Yeah.
I thought you were gonna do that. You just get.
About why trees are so important. It's it's something that's particularly meaningful in Chatty Hills because we are a official registered tree city and our preservation we're doing. For me, they always have. The kind of tree candidate that other people are envious of. And doing our little piece to help protect that and also to celebrate that here. Plenty of trees that we then can use for things like Christmas and all that as the way to do that. So if you're so inclined, come out with us on twentieth on that Monday at one and help us. And we can work on that together. And I'm hoping in the meantime, Robbie's gonna push a button and it's all over.
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna go back. He's gonna talk through the slides.
I should pull that audio channel down. And let him have to talk into it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, make sure I get everybody admitted. That's working good.
Hello, I'm Bryce Sunfire and this is. And we are the co-founders and co-leaders of the bridge. And we, as you can see from the slide, we started in two thousand seventeen. When a film called America To Me was shown. And that's a film about race relations and high school. And it was somehow perceived and there was so many good representation of various community. And afterwards. I was just a glow. And I just said, this has to happen, no one else. And Joey said.
This is this is. It's been seventeen. We've been doing it. And I would like to say thank you to Tom Reed because they're not really big. We actually had a meeting in my garage. Tom actually, that's good. And I remember we invited him to a meeting. I'm up there out of town and he came from the airport straight to me. And the fact that he's not. I always appreciate him to him. And he showed you the commitment.
This is the first slide. This man, Jimmy, we need to have a second slide every month. Sixty-eight, six to eight P M. Let's have the next slide. That's us. And our foundational effort. There's only one race. And there are still a lot of problems to and and to discuss that. Are needful for healing within our culture. And we promote healing, regular connection, dialogue. The next slide. We have community involvement, obviously, like a room that was just dedicated. And the next slide. And Joey wants to talk about the healing connections.
To really connect and well. I actually have one nice. Good. I'm I'm back to this city with Chad Dill. You know, we talked about like Peter talks about. Peter Clemmons. Because I want to kind of state how important it is for us as I've been in there. So I I want to share this part. I know we hit a slide and I'll be breaking it all down, but. I want to thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to do our first project. Because we talked about talking, we talked about eating, which Peter has been saying since very first, we confronted him, that we need to do some project together. And so we are very grateful that City of Chadville gave us an opportunity to do a project with us. And during the project. I mean, I don't know, but for me, it's such a big deal to come to here and do a project. And you know, me and Peter, we spent a lot of time here and. And part of our group and specifically to me is that when we spend time together. Something else happens when we spend time. And so that time, those moments, I wouldn't say thank you. Spending that time with you during that time. Pretty unique moment for me. And then you understanding my view of it. It's another way of picking up tools together and then doing something. Yeah. From what I'm hearing exactly now. And so that's my healing because I'm using myself with the healing. So that's our healing connection. And that's a continuing education.
And just the last few slides here, the Legacy Memorial Museum, we've had clips now. Gathered by a group of people and. Journeying down to Montgomery and have that really emotional experience together. Our next event, as you can see on the screen, is a target with the Atlanta Friendship Initiative. And it's the history of race in America and it's a day and dinner with the young one. From Compassionate Mountains. That's on the market for it. And if you want more information, just contact us at those numbers. And we can get you a link. But we're continuing to find new projects to do together. And we're so grateful that we were able to come together here with Chad Bills and and work on this most crucial because of the beginning of that process. Thank you for the opportunity for us to comment on that.
And thank you, guys. I don't know. We had a grand opening just a little bit ago of the art space now in down the hall on the right. And if you weren't here for this one. Program going on there. And that's all the work of this group there. So. All right. Next up is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide your input opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Again, keeping in mind that we've got an actual public hearing, so it will call general comments now. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council. First, state your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes. Your personal remarks. Can I see your comments? So.
First up, Rodney P.
Rodney P. One zero six eight five. First, I want to say thank you to everyone up there. Troy, Camille, Laurie, Tom, Richie and Ruby. They all have a tough job. You're never going to make everyone happy. It's selfless. And thank you because I know it's hard and sad too. Thank you a lot for that. We're trying to keep this city as great a place to live so we can raise our children here and they can raise their children here. And that's super important. And you're clipping our city to do that with tools like the T D R program that we've talked about since the inception of the city. A lot of hard and smart people work for that. A great tool for the city.
Somebody needed. And it's.
And also for the public service just a couple of weeks ago. Get a call. Hey, there's police in your drop. Your parents' driveway. A T T truck stop. Policemen are there pumping out. Some weeks before that, I'm driving home from work. Fireman's blocking the road. Right in my house, between my house and neighbors. Tree had fallen on the line, called fire. Police, the fireman's there. So now the police is there. So. Thank you, guys. We hate that we need you a lot, but when we do need you, if you guys are there. Thank you. We appreciate that. And. Oh, the sound system with TVs. I know we're having some growing pains. It is so well needed. Stand in the back. It's so much better to hear than have the crowd front here and guys. So thank you, Rob, in the city for that. And that's all.
Next, David McReed.
I'm David McReed. I live in. I was out there for about four years. I've lived there six to five years. I'm just trying to figure out why. We're all doing all this new rezoning. Are we trying to give our city away? Are we trying to lock down all the people that. Have actually paid taxes down there for sixty years? And give them no option whatsoever to sell their property or do because I'm on a dad vote passed away in the last eight years. We ended up with thirty-seven acres over on River Town with the sideline and my son's property. And I'm just trying to figure out why we're trying to get. A billion dollar studio down here, all the stuff that's going on as far as the growth goes. I've been down here since these roads were dirt. Now I have no problem with change. I mean, I see stuff like. Five thousand practical signs pointing to people's property. That I don't even know. And I've seen that all these years. So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. Why we need to do this? Are we actually kind of set it up for developers to buy in big tracks and not be able to divide it up for our families individually? I'd really like to know what's going on. And I appreciate you though.
Next, Nick McReed.
Nick McReed, one oh three nine over River Town Road, River, Georgia. I have a couple of concerns. One of the person is are are Serenby residents going to be exempt from the T D R? And also, if so, if any panel members are a part of Serenby. Would it be a conflict of interest for them to be voting within this process? For the T D R. Also, I wouldn't yield back any further time because. My father just spoke. We have a large tract of land. It was just inherited off of River Town Road. And we do have some great concerns. I've talked with Councilman Schmidt extensively about what the T D R process is going to involve. I wouldn't yield back any further time for Councilman Schmidt to advise the others out here of any frozen colonies associated with this process.
Next, Gloria Tedwards.
You're back on the central, you know. Make. Three and use seventy-four fifteen. That's the Almetto Highway. I'm gonna keep it brief. He was. Mr. Morrow. Well, tomorrow, brothers. My daughter, my son, and my son, my boy, and myself. We are here. For your help. We have exchanged emails with this. It's been going on for a year or so, but we got to the point where we could not tolerate it anymore in August of last year. And we started our communication with emails. We did a team council in in my last. Email correspondence with us all and Robbie. We are now following the recommendations of that. Because it has not ceased. It's it's inhumane. It doesn't make sense. So I spoke. Because I spoke with. She's little before this meeting. I'm going to make it short, but. We have a situation that we're not pursuing. We know of the importance of she. We're pursuing the music part because it is it it helps. Public nuisance. And we're coming to you for help. So we're done calling nine one one. And and I hope that you all don't. Look at that as. You're aggravated because we're following what you asked, Justin, you. This is not a neighborly person that would consider any town of the week or day or the limit. Of this. We need you here all over the city. Couple of gunshots, you know, but all day. Into the night with no respect. So Sunday evening, in in Sunday evening, my daughter and. Her husband, Lady Morrow, did any call. And because I need to have a call, I did not call nine one one. The officers did come. But you kind of. In Robbie's letter, he mentioned something about it as a date that we've not offered that. And from this point on, I asked the officer. Okay, per the letter, I read the letter to the officers and per the letter.
Yes, twenty seconds.
Okay, per the letter, what do we do at this point? To, you know, I don't know if you guys want to answer it now. You have our email address. You can do it at that point because I know tonight the agenda is.
Well. I think they shut off and they don't want to listen to somebody talking. Now it's going. Must become important after the. Must become up to the important stuff here. I want you to hear it. Must become up to important stuff here, I want you to hear it.
Silence happened. But your mind didn't go to. Breaking tonight, a New York police officer shot Saturday while trying to buy a used vehicle has done. His alleged assailant is in custody. Adin Fayas was one of the four officers shot in four days across the country. We're talking Alexis Nagados has details tonight from New York. Good evening, Alexis.
Greg, anything else? Horrible update here. The 26-year-old police officer now dead. He leaves behind a light. A New York riot who's gunned down while trying to buy a car he found on Facebook Marketplace. But when he showed up to purchase that car, the man posing as a seller demanded a cash, then opened fire. NYPD has identified the gunman as Randy Jones. Police told me Jones faced serious charges tonight, including first degree murder. And that's because he was seen to officer Faiyaz in handcuffs to take that suspect into custody last night. General Faiyaz was on rap sheet, but arrested in at least two days for everything for drug gun charges. This regulation. New Yorkers, we are in this together. The victim in this case is an NYPD officer. We will relentlessly pursue anyone who carries an illegal firearm or shoots someone in the seat. And this tragedy comes with law enforcement across the country are bringing along one of the
What's that?
Four officers in three different
With a test in here, you're
funeral for officers killed in the line of duty. And according to that, are the
Nice look. And this is a lot of love in Philadelphia. Our affiliate Fox 29, what are the big stories there tonight? Countdown is on. The only Kansas City Chiefs bar in Philadelphia will be closed Sunday night for the Super Bowl against the home team Eagles. The owners
A lot of good does, man, I can't get the sound of it.
Not about it. All this man for tickets to their party, so they've decided to cancel. Bar has been a haven for Chiefs fans since 1986. How about that? That's nice live look outside the Beltway, special for over at that.
I don't traffic. Things are easy to use happen.
Old Town, the joy of movement. Are you staring at these payroll forms? I did this payroll taxes will calculate themselves, right? Uh, you won't get too equipped with cells. You manage your payroll taxes. Cheers. With 100% accurate tax calculation guaranteed.
Well, one and a half years ago.
Put your phone.
I didn't know if I would ever play golf again. If you can't rehab, it was quite a journey. I thought maybe this is the best it's gonna be until I could balance my nature.
See, and I'm still
No, you're supposed to
My nose will get like the candy on us.
Thank you.
That what? Who that is?
I don't perceive that in the same way that we're changing things to make us more attractive. Um, I feel like we're changing things as they come up. That when we adopted the Fulton County zoning, it was a starting point. And we changed it over time as we did more comprehensive plans.
You have audio.
And now as we get.
Audio's now up.
Audio's now up.
So we had these zoning for movies studios all along, but we didn't have an application for. Same thing with the hospital.
No, just go to Zoom and.
Until someone comes in.
The Zoom information.
Has an application for a hospital.
You gotta Zoom out.
We may understand that there's some things that we'd like to.
I'm all let's talk rather than give you passwords.
Going the route of making things more attractive to attract development, just being more proactive about it. And when I personally feel that as long as these things still come before council, that we're not speeding ahead, I understand some people can't make all the meetings, but the rest of us have been leading on this for months and months. And um. So anyway, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to share that I have a different perspective on it.
Again, frankly, over the course of the last twelve years, you've made dozens and dozens of changes to the zoning. Most of those have been of a unanimous, so you know, again, as you learn things, you update. Um, anything else if not?
Hi, Tom, I always like to say so, but we have two options in front of us for the.
I suggest we take both of them.
So how would you go about it?
That's the way, that's the way I called it. So the one is adding the TDR requirement to the special use permit, right? And the other one lets us add it to everything it wants.
So it's not your own.
It's both.
Okay.
So you you heard the whole page of text, not the smaller part of the page. The bottom of the whole page replaces the top of that.
So it's because you both guys go a while, so yes. All right, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh oh one with the amendments that we discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, no. Carrie's three two, next up is twenty-two dash oh seven two. Which is an update to the transfer of the Volkhoritz section of the zoning. Mike didn't want to possibly do that as well.
He's gonna call me back.
Yeah, again, another thing that was introduced originally back in October. An update to our existing TDR ordinance makes a number of changes after consultation with the local experts on on this stuff. Um, we've had uh, see, public hearing last month, and since then have re-recommended changes to the the text. They don't recommend, sorry, they don't recommend a change to the policy, but absolutely changes. Good changes in in language, I'll I'll point you to them on page six. Uh, you can see them in red, removing the language that says uh, any parts will already fully develop based on its existing zoning or as otherwise described in the UDC. That text, except for the term UDC existed in the Fulton County code and and earlier, all earlier versions of this document. Um, kind of replacing that is the text you see just a little farther down on the page that says things that are to be subtracted from the total area to term the base area would include existing commercial or industrial development. Deduct the area of any land with existing non-agricultural, non-agricultural residential development. Um, the ordinance had been sidelined on that, we wanted to make sure that we can be off that. And then finally, on on page thirteen, there has been uh, sorry, on thirteenth, there's a list of requirements with conservation statements that would be placed on the on property. Uh, covered a bit is creating TDRs and number six there has said prohibition against constructing a place from any tiny tiny building for temporary permits for a facility on above low property except for agricultural housing, branch, which retail. In order to section. See, again, recommendations to strike that entirely, we think the the intent that you really wanted to carry forward um, is is covered, actually, in previous time, February, so there was, there was never really intent to, in our discussion, uh, to prevent maintenance of existing buildings, uh, the idea was for the ordinance just to um, define those things that are not allowed to happen and if that's assumed.
Let's go ahead and do this one, run away, can I get a motion in a second to adopt twenty-two dash oh seven two? As as we have it in front of this, changes on this. Uh, so.
Motion to adopt item twenty-two dash oh seven two.
Seconding.
With a motion in a second, any discussion about this one?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir, as amended the way this reads. I would like to recommend highly that Miss Loder recuse herself from voting on this. Because the way I read this, the way I understand the district that she actually represents would actually be receiving all of this. And it's easy all the departments and getting benefit from rather than, you know, any stakeholders out there with ours also in life.
That would be the case for any new development though, that would be in any of our areas, so I don't understand.
And to be clear, the way that conflicts work, when you were doing a rezoning that affects the, that affects the entire city, it affects every single person in this community. And so there is no way to have conflict on that, it's it's a overall zoning thing that affects everybody in the world.
I think four of the districts have, has, so many districts that seem to be like, or the council.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, I live on point one three acres, I'm not an owner of Cerebe Development, I'm not involved, I'm a resident of a handwork that I represent, I don't own any property outside of my point one three acres within shadow of chills. I just want to be clear, thank you.
Sure.
Rick, you want to weigh in on that? It's only if there's a personal advantage on it, so. Personal stake. So she can reply on cases about taking choices.
So additional number five, Claire would remove herself or excuse herself when Rocky has property of herself, she recused herself for any involvement in, and I don't know if I'm quoting that, but.
There was a difference and that's a personal gain and Claire didn't have to uh, raise herself.
She is at a long valley.
Right, but he'll know. If you're going to benefit from the TDR, you gotta you gotta get it sold. And if you don't have enough property to sell, tell where you, if you live in Cerebe, you don't have enough acreage. So yeah, in fact, I would say um, it's probably those who live in a rural part of the central city are the ones who benefit, if they have the property, that they can actually sell TDRs, people in Cerebe don't have enough acreage. So it's actually the reverse, it's going to cost people, well, not residents, but a developer of Cerebe, he's got to buy that. So he's got to buy the TDRs from those other citizens who know about, I mean, rural areas, I think it's actually rural, older. I'll say this, you know, the the TDR program. And I had to make some other people, the TDR program is intended to benefit that the record says. If you read the document. And I can tell, and I think we're gonna have some different opinions. I do, but you know, there's a lot of things in there that you want to start with, and the one um, I toss a blanket, America, this school, I'll go, you know, you toss credit, community credit, you can, three, one, if you don't own your property out now, right? You can't say it's TDRs. You might just not buy it, you settle it. People will tell you that you can look aside, you'll be this, whatever. What you can do is if I'm gonna buy your TDR, if you can go then the money can let you settle it, okay? So don't take my words for words, call the guy that owes you mortgage and ask him, hey, I owe you six hundred thirty thousand dollars, I'll sell my TDRs.
Or can I subdivide, or can I develop?
Now, you can't sub, can't sub, right? That's where you're at, right? You should go to your bank and tell your seller, you're telling them about. You know, and that's a big concern of mine because it was designed to benefit the small man, that's us. Okay, now if you look through this document, what you'll see is that um the city actually decides if you get to participate, so your property's paid off. I mean, the city gets to decide if they can even launch your TDRs. And they set a priority of usage for those TDRs. That's what they did, what you're going on, this is a sixteen page document, as you can see, I couldn't get my highlights off it. Let's see here, in your dwelling, you know, Fulton County, I've got a copy of their old, their old TDR ownership, as you said, they made one for us back in two thousand and fifteen. Identifies our borders and things, this was all put together back then, then you can read this if you want. Um, they're one acre per TDR. And ordinance, they must have passed, they deduct three TDRs because you already have a dwelling on the law. So if you're a guy that does own six acres and you own your house, you know, if your house is on one acre, I think you should be, if you choose to support the program. And remember, just if you participate in the program, your land is suddenly putting in here now, these characters, you can't change much, you got heck about it, if you pass away, you leave, you're waiting, the house still has to be done. Can't do a lot. Uh, you fought. You know, why, you know, I guess you could do that. Um, point is, you need to be very aware when it comes to this stuff, you know, so there's ways around things. Um, I mean, I guess. The city actually decides if you get to participate, so your property's paid off. I mean, the city gets to decide if they can even launch your T D Rs. And they set a priority of usage for those T D Rs. That's what they did. What you going on there? This is a sixteen-page document, so you can tell I couldn't give them highlights off of. Um. Let's see here, in in your dwelling, you know, Fulton County, I've got a copy of their old, their old T D R ownership. That, as you said, they made one for us back in two thousand and fifteen. Identifies our borders and things. This was all. Put together back then, then you can read this if you want. Um, they're one acre per T D R. And ordinance, they must have passed, they did that three. T D Rs because you already have as well, you know, on the law. So if if you're a guy that does on six acres and you own your house. You know, if your house is on one acre, I think you should. If you, if you choose to support the program. And remember, just if you just participate in the program, your land is suddenly put in there now. You got heck about it. If you pass away, you leave, 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 and the house still has you. Can't do a lot. Uh, you fought. You know, why? You know, I guess you could do that. Um, point is, you need to be very aware when it comes to this stuff, you know, so there's ways around things. Um, I mean, I guess if you got that kind of full micro, you gotta get some money. I don't know. Um, but also, you know, there's a benefit for larger landowners, you know, for your more acres. You know, I think it should be one T D R per acre. Per person, and then we get into the bits and the transfer credits, okay? What you don't have here, which I, which I understand now. Talking like it's mother people, um. Uh, you refer to a plan administrator, shouldn't just put a name, um. Also, too, um. Let's see. Um, these D T Cs, you heard me mention Merlin, is the transfer credits, okay? Um, this is where you go to City Hall and buy by screen. Okay, I thought those prices should be set up. Okay, you're fast. I go out to yours. Say the price here at City Hall is ten grand, I would average this. This unlimited map that can be purchased. There's no, there's no limit. I guess you got a hundred thousand. And look at your city. You got three thousand people. Mookie Studio right now. The A R C up in the lineup, and we have them both on six and one. Changing to U D C. You need to look at what's going on in your town, folks. You need to be aware. Now, if you want to sell out, raise your hand, let me know. I like the funny fish. I can't do that, I'm pretty good. So I have to defend my family's way of life. We got that's on, that's my land, this is. Right now, I can't put one house on twenty acres. Like, I haven't talked about this, but I pay taxes. So what I can do is keep it nice and pretty. So there's a little beverage to buy by, about six, seven acres. You know, City Hall is off, and the T D R looked up to a nice. Could you remain on these, but you can't do nothing with it. Didn't go restrictions on me and have my plane that's interesting, ride around. Make sure that you're taking care of it, quick. How about that? Isn't that nice? Little bonus. Um. I've always been amazed, and and I've given people, you know, we all got lives, we all have stuff to do. So, um. It is obvious to me, you don't have to be a journalist to figure out. If you ride around, see what's going on right here. It's, uh, unfortunately, and I will tell you this, we have an election going on. You better make sure we put people in these chairs. And understand that that you have a right to live here, because none of anybody else. Or you just won't. What you're seeing right now is the unwrapped. And this document does nothing more than hold in and steer it with City Hall. To avoid you. Which is what the whole thing was supposed to be designed for you. And yes, I did miss a few of those meetings. I was giving up. But I did have a meeting. With the expert on the run. He was obviously, he was no extra. He was looking at Mike for for our answers. So you know what? There there is a lot. You want to talk to me this? I'm surprised something this heavy, there's not been a copy sitting over there. And and that's just one opinion, guys. That's just one opinion. That's my opinion. But me, um, you know, one suggestion I made when it came with these T D Rs, and I was told that is, I was actually told. It confused somebody. It literally confused, um. And then example, if you have twenty acres. Okay, so if you own your house and you're twenty acres. What's wrong if you wanted to sell nine T D Rs? Okay? And you're able to cut your lot in half. That gives you one house per ten acres. That is ninety percent preservation. Our goal is seventy percent. The benefit to that is to you, because it's your land. If you decided one day, hey, I want to sell these ten acres, somebody would buy that, knowing that they had the ability to put a house on. They wouldn't care if it was under conservation. People don't move out here because they want to see big buildings, because they want to see all this stuff. That's not where you live at. Okay, if you want to do that, um. You know, picture you sitting here, go somewhere else, it's it's value, it's cities of value. And I was told, no, that nobody wants to discuss that. And we know also when here talks about what do these D two Cs worth, where we have to, we have to wait over twenty years to find out, you know? What is the true price of it? What is, what is the value of it when it goes to a receiving it? What is that bad? I'd say we've already got a good example. We already have a guy who's developing. If the value for me and you is thirty or thirty-five an acre. We know when it goes to a village or a handlet right now, they're moving the house to me. So maybe we need to look at that price. Maybe that price is real enticing. It might entice you, depending on where those numbers fall, pay off your house. Pay it off tomorrow, get your loan, do something. But in my opinion, this document, there's too many unanswered things in this. Is go ahead, pass it now, and we'll figure out the rest later. And that's really all I got to say about it.
Okay, okay. Well. Thank you, Mike, for taking all this time. I know we've spent a lot of time over the last, it's been four months talking about this. Um. So, my perspective is it's a volunteer program. We've had since before the city's form. My understanding is the primary focus is not to benefit the small landowners. But it's to benefit everyone in the city by trying to preserve as much property as we can. And by providing this optional program. It allows rural landowners to financially benefit from that as well. To continue to live on their property. While putting a portion of it in conservation, which they can do today. Except through this program, now they get financially, um, incentive for that. Um. As far as benefiting the little guy. We recently got some statistics from Fulton County Senior Services, which I'm interested in. And surprised to learn, I think our census is we're just over three thousand residents now. Nine hundred and sixty residents are sixty years or older. So I'm in the net sweet age group, thank you. And why I bring that up is, um, I think a fair number of those residents. Are probably not owners of a large lots. I think Tom has statistics that I can share with at same minutes. Um, so there's that, but and, um, because we're. Later stage in life, I'm I'm betting I don't have the statistics to back this up. A good number of us have our property paid for. Um, I'm one of those small landowners. I have five acres in a house that's built on it. As this was originally discussed, uh. I think one of the early discussions was to offer one T D R for twenty acres, because if you were going to subdivide your land. Um, you had a hundred acres, so divided into twenty acre parcels. Each twenty acre parcel could have one home, so that would be more development right. And that seemed fair to me. It seemed, uh, sort of market value. I mean, if you wanted to buy. Um, twenty acres, you'd only be able to build one home, you could build a village on twenty acres. But through more discussions we had and these follow-up, which means I came to realize that this was. By offering a a one T D R per acre that was offering more benefits to more landowners in the rural district. And, uh, subtracting three acres for those residents who had a home already, that seemed more than fair for me. It was that, it was one, at one point. Your land is developed, you don't really have that development right. I'm okay with that, just saying. Um, I've I've made a change in my perspective based on those discussions. Um. As far as setting the market rate for the T D R and having the city control that. My understanding was that the sale, um. Of a T D R is between the rural landowner, the sending area, and the developer, the receiving area, and it's at market price. Uh, my understanding was why would someone pay one value when they could get a smaller or a larger value from the city? My understanding was you're never going to get more value for your T D R than your land is worth. Because the developer could just go out by the land rather than messing around with his T D R, because he's got, like you said. Legal obligations for contracting, with surveying, with all these other things. So this is. I I recognize this is a complicated process. We've had it on the books since before we're cities, nothing new. We've actually had some T D Rs sold. Already that we're just now addressing this now is because there's finally a need for it, there's a demand for T D Rs. And, um, I think that. A lot of thought has been put into this document, and it's a starting point. We don't have all the answers. Uh, we don't have all the contracts in the place. We don't have a designated plan administrator yet. We need the starting point before we can move to the next level. That's my understanding as well. That's accurate, but that's how I understood it in discussions. And I think, uh. Some of these changes that we that we've made, um, through discussion that did good changes. And, um, I support this document, thank you, Mike.
A lot of question board, board, that's all good. Or. So there's a case, administration, please, it's just starting, you know, you just, so what the government's raised then. Who is that? Is, yeah, there will have to be an M O U, the city council ledger with whoever that is. Uh, before there is anybody, there's a ring, there's nobody identified.
Okay, cool, but the way we were exploring. In that meeting, we had a fold to review the city minister.
That is the zoning administrator. Oh, yes, well, identified in the zone, in the U D C, has the city manager with it. So there's a lot of there to the segmenting, individuals identified by, I did one.
Okay.
So Mike.
So would be the city manager.
That's the zoning administrator, right?
So Mike, with the T D Rs, Mike, it's over you. So with the T D Rs. People have a choice to sell them or not. They don't have to sell them, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So it's a voluntary program.
And also to respond to the question of order, I guess that's the point. We need this document, a frame to be able to set up.
It's one of the, this topic, uh, we already have top, at most of places. Because that's one of the improvements. We have a currently a D T C program adopted in T D R ordinance, we just don't have. Amendments and whatnot, right?
So we have a kind of leverage that that leaves somebody who's like thirty nine eight. Right, yeah, what kind of way, let's see, let's sell it.
And well, what that, even if it's something, sit down with thirty nine acres.
They 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 can only, they got a house already there. So there's a lot of us there, so. Okay.
So let's let's separate, what's separate issues, because I get that one of these people, and you know, a couple of people. You're talking about is what are such?
The T D R program doesn't affect your subdivision ordinance, that's a different point.
Or that case, that case, or the leverage back to a large development. That's the problem.
And give the T D R ordinance?
I've got a nineteen cent draw.
Yes, yeah, the D T C, what the D T C does. Again, we've had this conversation, but I'm just gonna explain this.
No, 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 I'm not trying to interrupt you.
No, no, I want to explain to people who are, he's referring on the question. Okay, why D T Cs, right? So the way the T D R ordinance works, and this is the way it's worked from the very beginning. Things that have been voted on by every council since the beginning of the city. The T D R ordinance, that's villages. By developing rights from rural landowners, intensify the village. So the village has five hundred investments. Well, they already own five hundred T D Rs of their own. And buy T D Rs to get then. Until they've used up their five hundred T D Rs. What the D T C thing does is it lets us contract with that person, say that they wanted to be five times as many houses on it. They have to buy two thousand T D Rs. And the T D R ordinance, they don't have to buy it until they've already used up the first five hundred, three, four, five, ten years down the road. At at the rate it's actually developed, because they don't have. With the D T C, of course, they have to buy four fifths of the T D Rs paid for, both as T D R from the first day. That's the concept. So you actually start. Demand for T D Rs to date that the builder starts building houses, not four, five, ten years down the road. That's the whole purpose. And I'll tell you something, too. We have worked on this thing for years and years and years with the experts in the country. And, you know, somebody Googles problems with T D Rs, definitely find T D R programs that have that problem. And people like Billy Man Help or Stacey Thunderbird, American Conservation Fund, National Conservation Fund, American Farm Line Trust. Billy Van Pelt is the one that did the one in Lexington, Lexington is one of the few examples in the country that people point to as one. That has in an area where there's development pressure, actually protected a bunch of them. And he's helped us develop this. Based on what they learned where they've been. Right? This is not something that has come out of the air. It is something that will, in the context of the development, the huge pressure we know is here for development, which, by the way, everywhere but Shadow Beach Hills. Is for really cheap housing and warehouses, right? And here, what we're getting is high-quality, high-tax building stuff, which is good for the city, good for everyone who lives here. This is the only place that that's happened, and in the context of this concentrating the development in just a few areas. And preserving the rest of the land, hundreds of millions of dollars will go to the people who choose not to develop. That's the reality of this. Um, I mean, you know, it's it's an important program, and and the idea that the better answer is just to do nothing. Makes them, you see, it's awful, and slowly though they are, that's full of warehouses.
So I don't think it was, uh, that you have a matter of two strings. And and I'm a William F. Buckley guy. I'd rather be governed by fifty people chosen off the streets at random than fifty experts out of Harvard, so. You know, that's just who I am.
Well, I'll say this too, you know, one thing that gets me to. Is, uh, they talk about, you know, having land cut up and this, becoming house. Hecking yourself, you're at one house per twenty acres, folks. Cutting the land up ain't gonna happen unless you got more than twenty acres. Okay, so if you're on twenty acres, you got a twenty acre buffer off here. That's what you got. So I would. I'm just telling you, from from resale value, uh, you know, putting your land in permanent conservation, you do what you want with your land. When you dig into it, I assure you, um. You read this document right here, unless you truly have the confidence, Paul. You'll come up with the same thing then. In the steering, you come to see. Until those prices are set. The way I see it, that builder's already got five hundred, six hundred T D Rs, whatever. It's not my problem. You know what? Our our tax digest is about four hundred thousand dollars a shooting. It's it. That's not because of what we're doing, that's because of what we're not doing. Question is, how much road traffic do you want? Do you want a detour like the towns want? Take ten years to build five hundred houses. Want to detour it myself, go parkway, take your next twenty minutes to get home every day? Well, I guess that's out, I mean, we already took off the parkway commercial, we got rid of the mileage. At this rate, you're in the home of your own, you want an education, you might have ten of these things for it to offset. It's like, you know, she understands it. And see, that's what I always say, somebody actually understands, you know, this is English. According to the expert, this is a doctrine you don't put together, Tom. I just wanted to review.
Just, just sorry. No, I don't, yeah, I mean, what we aren't doing, but what this is allowing us to do is to be. What the original folks, Branch Hat Hills, met and brainstormed over, and now we can activate that program. Although two people up here do not agree.
And it was the top, some of the top plans involved, of course, we moved on to the ninety percent of Fulton County stuff.
So I'm in favor of activating a program and the framework of this T D R program that's been in place.
All right, let me go ahead and call this one.
You.
For someone that may have a question about how it works, or we.
Wait, I'm happy to, you know, we we, yes, we have, we get questions, but no, not in this meeting.
Okay.
All right, can I get, uh, we've got a motion in a second, please, you know, so all those in favor of adopting twenty-two dash oh seven two, those members, say hi.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, that that carries thirty-two. Next up is a new business item, twenty-three dash oh oh five. Yeah, we we had it with the. Okay. Sorry, there's a lot of discussion.
Uh, Rick, do you want to talk about the, uh. So fine, we, uh, we just turn terms, mayor. By, uh, this next item, this first freedom, it's a no action, so I'm taking the mic just for consideration and for, um. Disclosure, whatever, to the public, so that, so you can understand what's happening. Uh, as you know, the U S government requires a, um, census to be conducted every ten years. That was done in twenty twenty. The reason for that. Uh census has been conducted every ten years. That was done in twenty twenty. The reason for that. Is to ensure that there is a vote, another word, one person, one vote. Uh so after the municipal digest comes out. All governments within our country are then required to look at their voting districts to try and make sure they're all. Equal so that the one person, one vote carries forward. Uh that was done in twenty twenty and now uh it is evident that. We need to redraw the boundary lines of the various districts here in Chatty Hills. One of the ways that that can be accomplished is through amending our charter. To amend the charter, we have to do this um right here, this matter uh presented before council two consecutive meetings. So tonight again is the first read, no action to be taken if it uh. Will be turned against next one. And at that point, the council then will be able to. Consider and debate the issue. So what has happened since the last several months. Uh we took the information that was given to us by the US Census Bureau and uh. Looked at how the districts have been drawn, hired an expert. Uh he and I have consulted several times in the last several months. And we have a meeting here for the public centers um. To present the proposed resources for the city. Uh and we'll grant this back to someone. Also in taking consideration, the buddy Whitechapel, nineteen sixty five, and I'm sure there's really not. Discriminating against any racial minority that whatever part was done. And the proposed district for presenting uh at the meeting and have been given the council here. I believe they're now on the website or available here. So no access denied, but next, we'll play protection in the council either. Vote, pass them, or uh front it down, or go back to the drawing.
Is there any questions? This is just trying to hear. That's the first thing to generate. All right, that's right. Uh next up is twenty three dash oh oh six, which is a contract with Kekinwood Engineering Services.
Thank you, Andy, your mayor council, and take this opportunity and to apologize again, technical difficulties. We did have our folks, technical folks that were. Remoted into our system and we we got in a, we have dates, it's temporary dates, so that way people should hear. So we got that part fixed, but it's not. Way it needs to be, but it gets, it'll get us to tonight. Uh but what we have before you is a contract with Kekinwood. Simply, this is a, it's a contract, so it has to go with the mayor council to approve. Not really anything different other than the fact that Wayne Smith is our engineer, has been our engineer for years. Has been acquired, if you will, by Kekinwood, which we also use as an engineering service, they've done a lot of work for us. Things that Wayne can't do. So this is actually a marriage that's gonna benefit us. Uh for Chatty Hills and his rates not changing. Rates of Kekinwood are à la carte. If he can't do something. Then Kekinwood will step in to check with us first, say, okay. Uh we'll we'll go, we'll go with you on that, but again, it's all car company, checking with the planes. Poor thing is his being on changing, this is a contract that we have to set new in order to keep one as our engineer.
Sorry, can I get a motion in a second, basically about twenty six.
Twenty three oh oh six.
Second. The motion is second, I mean, discussion on this. About all those in favor, say hi. Next up is twenty three dash oh seven, which is a revised uh fiscal budget.
Uh yes, mayor council, this uh test on during the financials, this uh budget amendments that we do have. We have you to audit, so others do budget amendments at least mid-year and of course at the end of the year, that's time to do it, make sure. We go into our audit with some accurate numbers we're at at that time of day. Uh the reason why I have a fresh one in front of you today is because between work sessions each day, went back uh in there and we. Noticed that the capital lease payment and interest capitalization uh there. Basically, the uh one thousand six hundred sixty six dollars should be applied to interest. Because we under budgeted that, but we over budgeted in the other, so it's just a wash at the bottom, but I don't want you to have something in front of you. Thinking that you're proving what was before you last week. I want you to bring what's in front of you now. That's the only change. It did impact how much we're going to, I would say. Um put into reserve of unbalanced, but the amount at the end of the day is the same. Uh we're increasing the budget by uh seven hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred forty six. Dollars, and that's gonna be the change. We're doing, going out until we do it again in June. But if you have any specific questions, I didn't want to bust you down, but not must be down to it. Um hold on, let me back up one step, because I did mention the work session, you know, a lot of folks may not have been here for the work session. We uh we're increasing, as I mentioned earlier, when my financial report. When you vote for this, you're voting for an increase to the general administration budget, which is where finance and is located. Finance department, general administrations, we're uh going to get some financial software that we're buying. We've got. Several we've been looking at for well over a year now. We're trying to narrow it down to the top three. Obviously, with the best that works for us, um and we're still doing some research on those and. We want to make sure, again, we have what we need, what our. Accountant needs and what our finance director and of course Dana is still involved in that process as well, so. That is in there, so when you prove these budget amendments, you're authorized to do forward that acquisition financing software. It will still come before you, by the way, to approve.
Can you get a motion to certain thirty about twenty three dash oh seven, which is revised twenty three budget? Motion to adopt twenty three. Motion in the second, let me, were any questions anyone? All those in favor of adopting twenty three dash oh second, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, those opposed men. That's where it's the members, thank you. Next up is mayor and council constituents, and I will start in Troy.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Uh probably you're gonna jam up, but. Not on you, but but yeah. Yeah, yeah, wow, now, I can't say that. I just wanted to. Just let uh chief little know that. I'm not questioning anything about you to answer that quick or anything of that nature, but we do have a lot. You know, a lot of people are scared about what's going on. Not scared, but concerned, as you, you know. And uh man, just let us know what you mean. You know, I I'm just one vote out here. I know that as a councilperson, I don't have a whole lot of sway. But uh I'm I'm for you then, so. Just let us know what we're doing to protect everybody. I mean, everybody. You know, you're a full thing you got. I talk to you all the time as much as I can. And I like the way you thank my law enforcement. I really do. I just wanted to. And you you know, fire service and uh. And I love the fire service. I got served a little bit, you know, and uh. If I ever, I know you got a bunch of stuff out there to be a grown seed, try to stop, come real change. Appreciate you all.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say two big topics we talked about tonight, UDC code and the TDR program. Um and you know, I just wanna. I've had a couple of questions um in in my district, and I just want to make sure, I know it's a lot of detail. There's a lot of information being passed around and and please, you know, reach out to me, reach out to Mike um. Just to make sure that if you are confused about something, we can clear that up and talk through it. Because, you know, I know I've done that in the last uh four or six months during this process and and some of these things kind of. Start making a lot more sense when you um sit down and you talk through it, so. Thank you.
Well, and I and I want to say thank you again to the to the staff and the whole TDR and UDC um process. All these meetings we've attended over months, it's just a tip of the iceberg. I feel like I'm Tim Council with Mike Morton. And so many, I've had some handful of residents in my district have asked questions. I've given my best response, but those followed up with Mike to make sure I'm getting it right. And I also suggest when it comes time to, when we think. This program might be right for you. To schedule a meeting um with Mike and he can sit down and talk. Give you the specifics for your land. Hey, that river run into my land. What does this mean? I want to do this rep. And they'll be, it it's a new program, I'll be happy to um give you your information, will help you with that. Uh a couple of other things um I've been working on. This last month is trying to reconnect with Fulton County and senior services. Been working on that for a couple of years, actually, since I I took office, I've been involved. Um Mayor Reed's been involved with that much longer, trying to get some level of services in city hall for uh seniors. Fulton County um. Has reiterated that they're the only support of uh senior centers that. They own, with the exception of two or three. And they don't provide capital funds to municipalities for senior services. That said, um we're still gonna try to work with them to get some programming funds for that. And if we can, we're just gonna tough it out and do it on our own, because that's what we do. So um working with uh Ruby and Community Outreach, we've scheduled, um we're gonna start scheduling senior luncheons at least once a quarter. Uh our first one is gonna be on Saint Patrick's Day. We're having a a senior luncheon here at City Hall, Friday, March seventeenth at eleven AM, because that's the time these seniors like to eat lunch. And we are gonna try to have a program inviting someone from um Fulton County Senior Services to come and tell us. Share their wealth of of services that they provide to us. Um. Also partnering with us will be the city of Chattahoochee Hills Community Outreach, we need brickworks. Providence Baptist Church and Fulton County Senior Services in that Saint Patrick's Day here. Another thing that we've been working on, continuing to work on is is. Trying to encourage um artists and other groups to exhibit in our city hall lobby exhibit area. Um that may kind of seem like fluff, but I want to say in. Uh to continue to shout out to Ruby, because we came up with that idea, we were able to do some. Um paper remodeling of that lobby area with hotel motel tax funds. Some of those can only be spent on um tourist development products, so it's not like we could use those ones to pave roads. But we did use it to pretty up city hall. This month, we were featuring two local artists and we're really proud of um that they're representing some of their art. Uh in in appreciation of um Black History Month. Melinda Lyly Arnold is one of the exhibitors. She also teaches at the Paint Space and will be teaching at the new um. Art room at City Hall. And our wonderful young artist we're uh featuring is Elizabeth Glover, who's a digital artist, and she started taking um painting classes as well. You might want to cancel the questions. Thanks.
Yeah, um there there's no doubt the city staff does do a good job. I can appreciate that. This is a great house to sit on, fire truck. I was there for the last using one of the bush tents, couldn't make this. But it it's long been they, we know that we don't. Repairing old stuff, we started out with old shit, and now at least we're at a point where the vast stuff can warranty. Tear it up, take it back, sort of. Um bottom line is, folks, those of you who've known me, know I am what I am. I'll give it to you the way I see it. Uh you can take it or not take it. I really don't care. You elected me to represent you. And I can tell you one thing, um don't listen to what people say, sit down, talk with this person, talk with that, they're popularly gone. Just grab the document and read. Grab it and read it, okay? Too late, it's already passed. Okay, I would encourage you to start paying attention more to what's going on around you before you don't recognize this place. And understand what the job is when you sit up here. The job is to govern, the job is to protect our way of life, is to make sure that our landscape is protected. And 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 I don't think that means you having to put your land in permanent conservation forever and ever. I think you pretty much did that one house for twenty acres. And you can sure for a lot of the conservation that way, because nobody else can do anything with it. Unless, of course, these seats change, and then that can change. So I would encourage you to take a look at what's going on this November. But and and recognize what the job is. Everything else is is nice, it's fun, the 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 parties are fun, it's great, and we got a art room down there. You know, it's about time we use this big old building, something, there's a lot of room there to use. Nothing against us. But when you take that oath, that ain't part of the oath. And y'all need to think about that if you want your city to look the way it does. That's all I got.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out um to Ms. Crawford. I wanted to say that you was asking for. We sent out an email, um blast or something, a date or so prior. I think that would be a great communication for Tom's field, was to um make sure that happens. Um is that work um for your police, um calling nine one one, maybe can look into that more. I know at one time I was talking about putting a policy for gun shooting or something like that, because I'm not for sure where we add on that. And uh for the TDRs, the TDR program is the choice. You have a choice to decide if you would like to be part of that program. And before you make any choices, you should read and understand it. No one is gonna put anything up against your head to decide to do that. So we need to understand this is a choice, it's not nobody's making anyone to do that. Um also want to thank uh Mr. Counselor Siri for working with the local artists for being able to put the art out in the um. In the hallway. And. And to the staff, I want to thank you for all your support and then.
Or if you just got uh an award from GMA for being the person who continues to change bills to finish. Training. Which is uh something that is important and.
Todd, I'm sorry, can you swap mics with Laurie back quickly, Mike?
Yes, sir. It's okay, we got you now. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, thank you.
Oh, he is the microphone.
It's your microphone.
Uh. Couple of updates and then just one, one other comment for me. Um. Uh met today uh with uh. The folks from Greystone um to get an update on their. Progress on running the internet, uh you know, they're, they had committed to run the high speed fiber through the entire. Uh Chatty Hills area, every house in Chatty Hills. Uh they are about four to six weeks from officially announcing the name of the business that they're gonna be doing that under. Remember, they can't do it inside of Greystone, they have to set up a separate entity to actually do that. Uh they are in the engineering phase right now, trying to figure out, you know, which routes first and and all of that. But uh what uh the guy told me was that we should be expecting somewhere in the next four to six weeks to have a big announcement. And then from there, we'll get a monthly update on. You know, when wires are gonna start running, where they're gonna run first. Uh their commitment is still, and they said this today, they still like, I'm vibing into next year. So every house will have, even if you already have an option, it's working for you, you'll have another option. Uh if you're one of those unfortunate people that just doesn't have a good option, I know that's a lot of people in cities, uh they will be providing that option. Uh and it's, you know. Cost intensive, high speed, mid-level internet, uh for recent laws. Uh fire truck, you know, I I also want to. I guess just mark again the occasion of us buying. Uh a brand new piece of equipment at that level. Uh this is a city that has scrimped and saved and and you know, at the front of the scrimping and saving has been these guys down here. Uh and and we know. That the maintenance costs on old equipment a lot of time are more than the cost of buying new, that's the money to be able to buy the equipment. And we're at that point now where police cars are being regularly turned over. Uh you've got, you know, good equipment for the people that are outputting something, that is a, again, a reflection on the the state that we're in. Which is not to underestimate. The impact that what's happening all around is having on the city. Uh again, the reason that we need more, at least more fire service is not so much because of what's happening in Chatty Hills right now. It's because of what's driving through Chatty Hills, on their way in the housing developments in Douglas County and Cooley County, all places around us, right? And again, you know, I'll just, I'll continue to make the case. That. What is making us special? What is keeping us from having the kind of development that everybody else around us has is our zoning. And our TDR, this is a part of that. Um. Quick thank you again to all the volunteers that work on the art space. A councilman brings up a good point. And I I will just echo the point that they made. When elections come up, think about who you're voting for. Uh there are people that come to every meeting and do all of the homework. Where there are people that come to a meeting like this. And say things having not been all reasons on all the homework. And it is a choice, there's no getting around it. Uh so I'm I'm gonna leave that at that. Can I get a motion in the second to adjourn where we're gonna be? Uh we have a motion in the second, uh all those in favor of adjournments, say hi.
Hi.
Close the name. You stand adjourned at eight ten uh. On the, on the uh. On the, on the, uh, T D R ordinance. We are working on a set of materials that shows all of the different things you do. With your land with respect to T D Rs, how that works, conservation, who the, how all those things are relating to each other. When we have that together, that part of it has been getting that T D R desk, you know, where we'll have a town hall. And everybody, you'll walk into true, all the possibilities and having material to give. Uh, again, we need to know what we're working with people, we can finalize that, so that's something this time. Always have the town hall, town hall is generally something for questions that, you know, aren't related to your property in particular, some things. Want to ask that, that we have the people here to answer. Uh, if you've got a particular issue, something happened to your house and wanna talk about it, please change. We've got all the people in the room, welcome to that. Anybody have anything that they left right now? Yes, ma'am. You can't, you don't have, it's much more casual, ma'am.
So with the T D R, and I use my example, so help me here. If Richie has a hundred acres, he has twenty acres first house. And he sells the other, well, he, he throws the other eighty into conservatorship, or sells the T D R. He dies. And he has two kids that wanna split it and build the house and they, once it's in conservatorship, it's gone.
That's right.
Forever.
That's right.
That's a wrap.
That's right.
Okay, okay, but. What's preventing, and you said we have nine hundred senior citizens. Okay? What's preventing some developer, and, and help me understand the rest of this, so he sells his T D Rs. To a developer. And this developer goes around, let's just worst case scenario, to all these seniors. That don't understand it because we know what happens, people take advantage of seniors and buy them all these T D Rs, go build subdivision. Over on the South Pole, what's to prevent that from happening?
It's the same issue, and I've seen this happen here in the community. Forget the T D R ordinance, I've seen people take advantage of seniors who are buying their land from them. When they're old and adultated, right? There are people in this community that own land that they bought from relatives or whatever, or well less than market. Right? I mean, there's nothing to prevent that, other than us all taking care of our neighbors, trying to make sure that doesn't happen. Now, I'll tell you that, when we get the information out about what the possibilities are and start talking about values and start publicizing. It becomes harder, right? I mean, right now, somebody may think, hell, I've got seven acres, I've got a few development rights to sell, I wasn't gonna do anything with them, maybe I should sell them for a thousand dollars apiece. Thousand dollars. Or when people start to recognize the value, those, they know, right? So publicizing that is a part of the benefit there. But again, compare it with anywhere else, there's no mechanism to get money in your pocket anywhere else at all, right?
So is the, it. By moving it to just, you know, you're not a panel? I'm gonna keep it rural, so, okay, and, and I, we, if you wanna build, if they wanna build a, um, a studio on top of. Cause I'm not lying down much, so yeah, I, you know, any, my, my issues were influx of people right in our city, okay? But, so, so some of the interest, now that changed after, to build, obviously, this, I, I'm not part of this because we only have nine acres, but. Isn't that kinda like saying, okay, my own twenty acres? Now I'm gonna have S O L at this point, cause I, I can't do anything with the other tenants. So why not sell them? Doesn't it send me to do the, the D T Rs and sell it off so if somebody else can buy it up? In a way? If I had twenty acres, see? And before I could.
And you were planning on developing them?
Let's, let's decide. To my daughter, to buy, to build a house.
I, I hear.
Now it's twenty.
What, what I'm saying is that, sorry, like, I hear all these hypotheticals all the time. Well, what if, you know, and, 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 hey, developers are buying, and they're selling a million lots for millions of dollars an acre. You know, and they spent billions of dollars on infrastructure. And, and, and when we have the program, when people would do the lots for families, nobody took advantage. The only people that took advantage were developers, people who were coming to buy land and split it up and make it less rural. So, yeah, the whole goal from the very beginning was to try to keep as much of Chattahoochee as rural as we can. We knew there was gonna be development, you can't prevent it, but you can definitely constrain it. I'm, I'm just look around, all right, look around.
That's why I'm here, cause I am looking around and, and I just.
And people moved to Alpharetta thirty years ago thinking the exact same thing, I promise you, cause I'm the only one of people that did that.
I just think we're changing our zoning, we, it seems like. It seems like we're changing our zoning all the time to, this is from the ignorance side, like I said.
It's not a zoning issue, no.
But it seems like we're making a lot of changes because we want the extra tax revenue for our rooms. And I, I'm really fooled if you keep it hutch and buried this the way it is, so it's not good to ride on.
We have it's the one thing that increases the amount of development they can have in Chattahoochee Hills. I mean, I get it, because that's the way people are characterized, it's not true. Right? And, and again, I'm happy to walk through some iterations, some, maybe one.
I, I, I have my friend, Chris, who was the attorney, and we've talked to it extensively, and there's pros and cons each. But I just would say, um, like I said, I follow the rural side, so I wanted to understand how D T Rs worked. Um, because there's a lot to, so thank you for clarifying.
Oh, there, there is a lot to it, for sure.
Thank you for, for.
That, that, that's why I would tell you, you know, we did, you know, that's what Camille said, we do have the T D R ordinance. We do, we adopted one in British County. And now that we've got a man that wants to build a apartment, right? Just to build a small village now, so he wants some of these, we found that out at the class meeting. When I asked a council to vote it off in thirty days because of my horrific injuries, so that's why I wasn't here. And they did, they did that, but there was a question that was asked, is there a problem with doing it? It was said that we have somebody interested in buying these things. Okay, that's why I said, we got a T D R ordinance. Why don't we fill in the blanks and then you don't have to ask these questions? You can just read the document.
But again, to be clear, D T Cs have been in ordinance too.
It doesn't, let me just say this, okay, this is one of the big problems. We always sue. The only thing that has to happen this time. Is having a conversation mostly before the vote. In your town.
What is the difference between a D T, meaning a T D R?
The big difference, to make it simple, is, uh, the D T C, you come to City Hall. As a district transfer, okay? My concern is, is if the T D R is priced at thirty grand and the D T C is a ten, Tom just gave you an example of a thousand. Why would I do business with you? When I come to City Hall, which it doesn't, it has an unlimited number that you can purchase, there is no limit. So, that's why we, all people always said, oh, you know, what you did to the knowledge restrictions and this and that and everything else, yeah. We go back to the original thought of the city, was to have three or four babies massive developments, that's what I mentioned earlier, we're not woke. If anything is happening, if we've proven anything in this city, if we had one more, uh, a development like State Night. We'd be just fine, you don't need ten of them. Okay, but what is happening is, you're exactly right. I'll say it when others want. Because people know, we sense like everything that we do now is an attempt to tear down the zoning, will make it more tractable. And that's exactly what you're doing.
Only for people who never.
You're putting stuff in your zoning with your D C today. For a movie studio that hasn't even been held yet. That tells me you already got your three votes. And if you don't have a question for me.
That's right, and Palmetto means four.
Got it, um. If, if anybody has a question for me, I'd be glad to answer. My daughter is a paramedic, she's coming over to be settled. Any questions you got for me before I get? Or you can call them, hell, I posted my number on Facebook. Any questions? If you want a copy of the document, let me know.
It's not just for me, but I have a question about T D R, just one quick. So we've got several large land that owns out here that own a thousand acre tract, okay? And then they also own a large tract of land in other parts of the city. Are they going to be allowed to purchase a T D R that they sell? Like if they, and they're gonna be allowed to transfer development rights on one piece of their property to the valley?
Cause they already own the, yeah, that's what Steve does now. She owns a lot of the city.
Alright, so they, they're basically the Robinsons who take all.
No, they're not.
They're Robinsons, you know, taking them themselves.
They are moving development rights from a place that is permanently preserved and will never develop. To another place where they're developing more densely, that is the whole program. Hundred percent. And that's why, right, the easiest way, if we want to sell developed lands, people will just buy land. No question, that land will be permanently preserved.
And I'll. Um, so, a developer can buy T D Rs and they can also apply for special use permits and variances on that development. So they can, they can utilize all those.
Those, those things aren't connected in any way, yeah.
I, I, I know that I said, my fact of me, um, uh. You know, will text me, but, uh, and I was gonna make sure, um, well, maybe just calling them. Everybody, you know, get orange, zip it up, but. We find, we're here, it was. To be considered, uh. Because we're not in the hunting state, we're in the, shooting. Disrespectfully. There has to be a way to change orders, because we live in. I'm in, I'm in my back bomb, because I call on my front and shoot. I'm shooting straight in with a tractor on my, for, if I shoot, shooting from my left. That's my neighbor's heart, if you hear that, you can tell me that, you know, I'm gonna shoot to the right. I can't shoot to the left, cause that piece burned low, my daughter, and maybe, if you like to me, come out my back and shoot in your yard, no. So because of the way we are positioned now. As opposed to whenever those laws were put in place. It has to be renewed, it has to be something that there is need. Five, or. For acres, it has to be something, I know that. Amendments can be made, this is what, we're not finding our way, and I know she's little. We're gonna follow each step so we can heal, and if you have to take it, wherever we have to take it. Because this is so disrespectful. And that, I cannot. Explain, up there letting you hear online, my daughter left from her bedroom. She is dangerous, you don't know where, uh, are these powerful rockets are, and, I mean, they're not just shooting at us, honey. So everybody know how they walk behind, they got, they wanna walk in, uh, the, that wooded area. She can't do that. Unless she, whenever in the side of the farm, you say, hey, uh, we're gonna get in the woods, can y'all hold it down? I just don't believe that they are shooting here, so Chief Little and I have discussed that. But, our main reason here is different uses, it, it was something that we want and request. We put everything and writing everything on, on, in place. To have importance amended to protect our kids. Uh, you guys don't live under these circumstances where your company needs you, your child can't go in the back for fear. But she, we don't want to be that example and somebody stand up and say, hey, well. Any excuse other than we did our best, we can say that, but she can't sit on her back porch. And if, if, even if it wasn't, the noise is so loud. So, my, I wanted to reiterate that you're any kind of hard living that I may, cause it's here, is some type of revenge. You're coming here for you all. We don't wanna have to go to any level, uh. This is, this issue we recall right here, we have six feet up to that view.
Um, what is your name again?
Gloria Edwards.
Miss Edwards, um, the property, the same question, that's directly behind you.
Now, if we behind, my, my word is a mobile. You take a good side road to get a shot.
Back into that, so. Do you know, and I'm just asking, cause I'm ignorant of this, I think I know what the property is about. But is that actually in Chattahoochee, that property that's behind you?
We can make a difference, same concern because we can't sleep, we can't rest. This is all day, all night, not just how, how, how. This is like, we're in the, okay? Until they, they just, until they, they, it was totally, it is in Chattahoochee.
Who, who is they, other than the neighbor, you said strange people coming in and out?
You mean the residents, well, I'm speaking of the residents that said.
I'm saying when the guy's shooting, do you see that, like, you've got ten buddies over there?
They work on this house, and he's the owner.
Okay.
And for years, they've been renovating the house. So when they come to work on the house, the music blast that I can hear music across the road is, is not. It's like, I don't understand the thinking.
No, I follow, yeah, it's just, it's, it's very disrespectful.
But to me. I wasn't gonna give the money, and I guess it's not my business, but. These. Rapid fire, and, and I know, if you got thirty round in the field, in the bullet sort of hits them out. And you just, and it's not the emptying. All day, that's a lot of money, so I know I recognize, you know, it's the big hand, um. That's right, so, I'm, I can't question where they give their money, but I'm, I'm saying that. And I've mentioned before, one of the police, I can tell you, be careful, cause they got everything it is to have, to whatever purpose. But my reason, my reasons for being here is that we're not gonna live like this. Which is not fair, is inevitable, and it's more so, the ones.
And, and, you know, per, personally, the idea of Chattahoochee Hills, fifty years in the future, city has multi-talented proportions that are protected. People can come on, is a beautiful thing, and recognize, and that's not what the city is. A real place to grow houses and close together and all that. We're, we're gonna talk about this in the next work session, I don't, I don't know if there's an easy resolution, but. Yes, ma'am.
Kim Anne Bree, and I'm at Fire Force, whoever, and, um, I sue here. Um, at night, in the dark, um, grounds, I don't know where it's coming from. But I am concerned about it, also, um, is there a? Or ends, um, for dogs barking all night and stuff like that?
We, we do have a noise ordinance, uh, I think the, the unfortunate thing about the noise ordinance is that it is violating sound levels. And when you go out with a meter, that sound, it's like the dripping cabs in your sink. It's not very loud, it's just mind numbing the irritation, right? And when you go out with the meters and actually meter the noise here all night long, it doesn't rise to the level of, of violating the noise. And Steve, you know, it's illegal. So, uh, you know, and, and our police, we do, we get called regularly on noise complaints, and they go out with a meter and check. But, uh, you know, when you, when it's not above that level.
I don't know if they can catch the people that, you know, I said a bunch of.
Same, same thing, right? It's, it's the same thing for all of these conversations, when it's happening, right then, right now, call nine one one.
Yeah, I'll call nine one one, meet you when, uh, we'll get to you in a moment, and I'm waiting, waiting, that doesn't do me any good. Yeah, I've called nine one one and I'm like, I'm not, I don't follow it anymore, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I've never had that before, but, yeah.
That's the first I've heard that too, so, now, I'll tell you something. The next time that happens to you, if that ever happens to you, because, uh, you know, I have, I have never heard that point, and. That's a serious complaint.
It is.
And if that happens, call. And if that happens, call one of us and we will follow that up with the nine one one. So it was a split incident last year. Where somebody was right on the edge of the city. And it was a new address in the nine one one. And I just, that person called me and I called nine one one right then, got it resolved. The point is, like, that, don't let that stand.
Yeah.
And it's a problem nine one one, you wanna rest right now. In the moment. So please, yeah, don't let that, don't let that sit, please.
Tom called out there. I ain't building this twenty eight years. I know all of that, what you're talking about, so no thing that I missed out on, we did a meeting. We called that without time to be here. I'm, I'm like, oh, yeah, I work a lot. But so I know I have a lawyer, I know what's why you got a lot of these property in an area. I've lived out here all of my life. So, I mean, relatively, you know, I don't ever wanna move here, move here, unless it's forever. And so to be, you know, I know you directed that, you know, so that doesn't work often. Anyway, no, it was everything I do, you know, I was building a Oriya house. Right now, like I've got, I've got somebody showing, I said, hey, I gotta contact you, build you a house, and I'm not gonna build it too good. Wouldn't like that at all. So I'm just telling you, the way I feel about the situation, you shouldn't be able to tell people what they can do with their part. Whether it's team yard or F O N, if you don't have. You just tell them, it's, you don't have that power. And like I say, we have, we have a inherited thirty seven acres, so if we do a twenty acre sale.
So to, to be clear, I was not calling you guys out.
Yeah, I, you said that there was people here to come here, all they deserve and need, cause you're right, I do work, thank you so.
I was not talking, I promise you, I was not talking about you.
Okay, well, there's imaginary people here.
No.
Say it, this is the way I feel.
But anyway, the, the point I'm gonna make is, I hear you, right? I hear you, but you don't want any restrictions on your land. I totally hear you. I also hear all the time how if somebody has a hundred acres or a thousand acres, we need to really restrict that. And and the whole thing here is about balancing, it is. I mean, you know, the, the, the conversation about how many acres the minimum acre division is, is one that we've had so many times. And it's been voted on so many times by people in this council so many times. It's, it's one of the hardest issues that we talk about. It's, it's not related to the T D R ordinance, but it is a hard issue to resolve. Because if you let everything have houses everywhere, it is not rural. It is Smyrna, it is Alpharetta, it's whatever. And what, what I always hear people say is, I wanna keep it rural, I don't want it to change until I wanna change it on my land. And and I hear you, I get it, I, I get it, I do get it, I understand. And somewhere you have to draw lines, where, yes, we're all giving up a little to get this other thing. And and again, always open to the conversation about whether we got the line in the right place, but that's the conversation right there. We're listening to what people say they want in the community, which is not development.
Yeah, but I see you actually in voting this stuff in before this slide, Troy or G T. You know, you even think about it and do all the research on it. And I know these people right here in the audience, visiting, saying, movies, they don't know anything about building, it's already developed. It's like whatever you said, it's gonna get passed, and I saw that happen a lot. And I actually saw you call down, but was there, was, was more of a dictatorship than we, that does on elected situation. And that's what I think here.
Alright then, thanks everybody. We will see you next month.